Excellent. Good morning, everybody. It is February 7th. We are here at 11:00 a.m. at the start of our regular Board of Commissioner meeting. If I could ask everyone to please silence your cell phones and join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence if we can get this meeting started.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We have 14 new items on the agenda, new business items, and I would, next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. I think the only thing that I have to add, which I think is pretty minimal, is the addition of a number of sets of minutes that will just include in either review or approval that was sent out last week in preparation for the meeting. Does that sound good to fellow commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So with, I don't have a list of all of those dates, but I'll get to them when we get there. With additional sets of minutes for approval, I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
On second.
All right. Any further discussion?
None. None for me. Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Great. And we'll move on to community informational items.
Alex Marsh for a public comment.
Okay.
Just want to get to them. Sorry.
Okay. We'll move into community informational items. Commissioner Marcela, do you have anything for us today?
Sure. Still working with Jason and Sydney on finalizing some of our legal documents for our transit plan. Working with C.DOT. Aaron's here today on some of our remaining grant funding and opportunities to implement our transit plan locally. Right Start is having our strategic planning session tomorrow. It's not open to the public. We are talking about our long-term strategy, so I'll report back with anything that comes out of that strategic planning tomorrow. Just to remind everyone that we are a nonprofit and we are eligible to accept donations if anybody would like to donate to childcare in our community. We've been open for a little over a year. Do have a waiting list, so we are serving our community at full capacity as a large childcare center. So yeah, I'll report back once we have that planning process tomorrow.
That's great. Commissioner Peter?
Need to quick note that we're part of the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments and they, through state funding from the feds, have a grant administrator or grant writer and administrator to help secure some of the appropriate federal grants made available from recent federal infrastructure bills.
Excellent.
So yeah, create new capacity for us to tap into.
Great. Forest Health Council is meeting partners to kind of set up, tee up the projects with ongoing on-the-ground fuel mitigation. Our Regional Housing Authority meeting will be next Wednesday. And I'd also like to announce the Board is working with the Department of Human Services to address the end of the federal full or maximum allocation for the SNAP program. And we intend to do a transition of three months through March, April, and May of additional funding so that those who have benefits don't see that cliff effect at the end of February with the end of the pandemic, at the end of February for that public benefit. And have I missed anything?
I don't think so.
All right. All right. Great. Any Commissioner clarifications?
None for me. Thank you.
None for me.
Okay, nothing for me either. And we'll go to public comments. So public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand and/or sign up. Please state your name and your address. You have three minutes. So our first hand up is in the room here. Paul Irwin?
Hello, my name is Paul Irwin. I live at 1219 Harrison Avenue. I tried to get on the agenda because I've got some very serious public hazard issues I want to discuss and get mitigated immediately. Can you guys make a call and say, no more rocks in the highway than to that pile of rubble that the county's allowing somebody to use as road? Can you call to make somebody put some protection up for the highway today? Yes or no? Is that something y'all can do?
Well, Mr. Irwin, we don't usually discuss the public comment, but I know that staff has been in contact with you with Public Works and C.DOT, and there's a number of things that have been put in place and expectation set. So if you can connect with-
Go ahead and finish my minute.
Go ahead.
I'm a structural engineer from Civil, Colorado, 20 years. Part of my licensure involves me alerting the public or someone of a hazard to life-saving. I have alerted the county for almost a year that somebody is going to die when a rock comes off that mess and they try to avoid it and somebody's going to die. You three are now a public hazard because one of y'all can make a call, make this shit happen, and then we don't have to worry about the rocks because every day gets worse. Every day gets more dangerous, and you three people are expecting us to incur more risk every day because you're not doing it. And all you gotta do is say, we've been told by an engineer for a year that somebody's going to get hurt. Call C.DOT, call Public Works, and get the barriers put up, get the fencing put up, because that project is a mess and it's going to be a mess for a while. We know that. They're even talking about a different road now. So please, please do something. It's easy. There's no skin off your back to make a call, and then we're all safer instead of less safe every day that we drive by at 65 miles an hour. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christian Lumalal and I live on 422 East 7th. I'm here to make a comment on behalf of myself and only myself, no other organization or entities. I want to make it very clear that this isn't a personal attack to any of you. I don't care about any of you personally enough to want to see your downfall or see you fail or care to attack you personally, but it's come to my attention that you all said that, you know, there's an issue with trust between the county and its people. The issue is that you go around in public meetings saying that you guys are the only ones doing anything, saying that these organizations don't do anything. And when we do reach out with our concerns, for example, with DHS being below 40% enrollment in SNAP for the last few years since before COVID, which is completely unacceptable, and we go around telling these organizations that are just saying, hey, we just want you to enroll more people or to just have your office open and have negative feedback for them, is crazy. And there's no surprise that there's any negative feelings towards the county when you guys literally go around in public meetings saying that we're doing this. You guys aren't. You guys aren't actually doing anything. Nonprofits aren't doing anything. No one's doing anything but us. It gives off white savior vibes. I absolutely hate it in every way because all of us just want to see a better community. That's all we want, is a better community. None of us care about you individually to the point where we're attacking you or want to see your downfall. Some people may, but they're just weird. Just ignore them, man. We ignore them all the time. So it's just absolutely baffling to me that we go around and attack other organizations despite what our history may be with them, despite where they may or may not fail, when you yourselves aren't passing either. Their 20, less than 40% enrollment in SNAP is not passing. Anything less than that is completely baffling. And the fact that this hasn't been an issue that just barely now because of the public pressure has been talked about, but it has been an issue since before COVID is just baffling. How is it that directors aren't failing? That's a complete failure. If I get 40% in anything in my life, I'm failing. There's no exceptions. That's just the reality of it. The city or the state is sitting at 72%, and that's among one of the worst, and they're still barely passing. So it's ridiculous that we somehow don't get anywhere near that when we have less people. And somehow we have the audacity to make new programs in DHS itself when we can't even get the programs that are already in place working. Do you think that anyone in the community that has expressed that, hey, we don't really feel safe in your DHS office because we're Latino, is going to feel safe trying to work with you in your Spanish program with DHS when literally we've been trying to say, hey, there's a problem, and all you can respond is, who? Give us a name. Give us a name. When we're just saying, man, it doesn't matter who the whistleblower is. There's just a whistle being blown. Address the whistle being blown. It doesn't matter who the whistleblower is. Doesn't matter if there's one individual. It's clearly a systematic issue. If we're sitting at less than 40% SNAP enrollment, there's clearly a systematic issue within DHS that is causing these problems, not an individual issue. If everyone is saying the same thing over and over, but they don't feel comfortable in the Latino community coming to these organizations run by the county, then take some insight. Be like, okay, well, maybe there's something wrong with the system. It's not just a person-to-person issue. Maybe there's something systematically wrong. But instead, we're just saying that, no, you guys don't do anything. The Housing Coalition doesn't do anything. They're not actually doing anything. We don't even see you at those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
I only know that Alex Marsh was on line.
Yeah.
Okay. Online then, and we'll come back to the room. Just to make sure we've hit everybody. Looks like Alex, you have public comment?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
So just brief public comment. According to the agenda, likely today by the end of this meeting, the moratorium on any new businesses that operate off-highway vehicles, sleds, ATVs, things like that, will be voted in. As we know, it's supposed to be brief or for reasonable duration. I've met with, by the way, I'm not here on behalf of myself. I'm here on behalf of Leadville ATV, who is a commercial operator for both summer and winter seasons of OHV vehicles. And they do use county roads, only county roads. But I wanted to clarify as we go forward, we've communicated some with the county attorney. We just recently heard back from her shortly before this meeting. But we're also in close communication with the other major operators in the area. And while we do have overlap in some areas, they're also less similarly situated than others. However, we have all communicated to each other that the notion that we're all being consulted and met with, leading up to the comment period on what the new proposed ordinance would be, feels a bit misleading. I spoke with representatives of the two other largest outfitters just yesterday. Both of them had said that they hadn't spoken with planning or zoning since the end of the summer, and that was just becoming the current compliance. So we just want to reiterate that the community is out here with lots of input on how this will go. You know, 40 years ago, Lake County made a decision to not go the way of Summit County or Eagle County when it comes to use of off-highway vehicles in our community. And it feels as if it's being portrayed that all of the relevant players are involved when the relevant players, I think, feel that they're more likely being avoided. We would like to re-extend our invitation to hold a roundtable with commercial operators and the Board of County Commissioners and planning and zoning, the actual relevant people that we keep talking about contributing. I could host it at my office. We could either do it in your meeting there. It's been floated to me that maybe not everyone wants to be in the same room. Now, that may have been a feeling you guys got initially. That is certainly not the sentiment I feel from my clients and the other operators. Now, they all, we all seem to be pretty much on the same team and have a lot of similar ideas that communicate. And I think we also have done a good job of figuring out ways that this could be worded to make it work for everyone. So again, that invitation is still open. I believe three weeks ago when I spoke prior to the meeting, Commissioner Marcela said someone would be contacting us about these concerns. We finally got an email back from the county attorney today on some of these, but again, I think a good sit down so everyone can look each other in the eye and talk about their real-life business and the way the wording that has been proposed will affect it would be a really good way to craft this without the hustle and bustle, if you will, of the open public comment period, which is also important. Don't get me wrong with that. That's, we certainly need to do that, but I just want to re-extend that. I want to state the feelings that people don't quite feel that the communication they're having with the committee is being represented, particularly with Ann Schleider, is being represented properly. And going forward, we just really would like to be more involved in this. And as you guys like to say, my door is always open.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Your time is up. Thank you. Again, don't usually engage in the public comment, but I know, Mr. Marsh, that your client sat with staff after our last work session for at least half an hour. So I know that they have been in contact and in communication. And I know that a number of the commissioners have sat and spoke with at least three to four outfitters within the last few weeks as well. So moving on. Are there any other folks who would wish to make public comment, either in the room or online? I don't see any.
I don't have anybody else in the chat either.
Okay. All right.
Hi, I actually have a quick comment. I'm calling in to Zoom meeting. Trevor Dillon. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, Trevor. Go ahead.
Hi, Trevor Dillon of Leadville E-Bike Tours, 123 West 6th. So just in congruence to the previous public comment, this blanket moratorium on outfitters, I don't think applies to non-OHV outfitters. And I sent an email in regards to this to Jeff and Sarah. And they, when they looked over my plan briefly, they seemed in support. So I'm just kind of curious where that moratorium stands.
Okay, got it. Thanks for that comment. And I just, does anybody else who joined us want to make public comment? We are still in the public comment portion of our meeting. Okay, great. And we'll address some of those as we get into the agenda item of the moratorium on number three. Alrighty. Not seeing any further public comments, we will get into new business. And first on our agenda is a presentation of the fiscal year of our 2021 audited financial statements led by James Hinkle. Welcome. Thank you, with Hinkle and Company.
Thank you very much. Hinkle Company had performed the annual audit of the financial statements for the fiscal year ending 2021. This was our first year in the engagement. One of the first things that we do is analyze the internal control process of the county throughout the entire audit work that we do. We're looking for any issues that would lessen the internal controls. Specifically, we're looking for segregation of duties. That transaction typically takes three steps: initiation, approval, and recording. And we want more than one person involved in those three steps. Based upon all of our hard work throughout the entire process, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. Those are terms of art for us. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. So that's good news. The internal control process is in place, working as the new light department. We then turned our focus to the auditing of the financial statements themselves. I think this was a learning process for everyone involved. The prior auditor had done the audit for a number of years and had taken on a lot of the responsibility in closing the books and things and directing statements that is normally a responsibility of the auditee. And so we went through a lot of different areas like capital assets and whatnot, trying to reconcile things. And I think we've made a lot of great progress. If you do look through the actual financial statements, you will note that the presentation is slightly different. The governmental accounting standards requires on the governmental funds, financial statements, that balance sheet income statement, that only what's defined as a major fund is presented, and then a total of all non-major funds. And then in the back of the report and the supplementary information, there's a detail of all the non-major funds listed there. In the past, all the funds that the county has were presented on that main financial statement, and that gets cumbersome, very detailed. And that's why the accounting standard says only those funds, the general fund and any other fund defined as, under our standards, as a major fund are presented individually on that balance sheet income statement. And then all non-major funds are combined into one column. So we've restructured that presentation, and that's why we've done that. The audit has been filed, completes into the state. All that's been taken care of. We are working through the single audit portion of the audit. That is where we are required to audit compliance with federal awards. We are having a little bit of difficulty. It's not a county difficulty at this moment. It's a state difficulty. The first problem that we have gotten over was when we started asking questions upon the state's reports of what programs the county participated in, what the federal award dollars were. We sent over a completely new updated schedule that the county had never received before, completely different numbers. We got through that, but we are having an issue with the state, and you're not alone. We're having this issue with two other counties as well, that involves the SNAP program. The county gets effectively funds in two different buckets, if you will. One is an administrative reimbursement, which is no problem. The other is the actual SNAP benefits. And the state, in their reports, came out and said, these are not game to be passed through money to the counties, and therefore should not be on the schedule of its finishers of federal awards, and therefore not subject to testing by the auditors. We asked for some documentation to support that position because when we read the Federal Register, it says the entity that determines eligibility of participants is the entity that was required to be tested. And the state sent us a document from 2014 that says, therefore, this is not a federal program requiring testing at the county level. And then that same document continues to say, however, this does not apply from 2015 and on. And we asked the state, all right, you got old documentation that you're showing us that we're not responsible for testing the eligibility of this program. You have something more recent than that because when we read the Federal Register, it says that the county is in fact responsible, and they have yet to get back to us yet.
Okay.
And it's significant because the dollar amount involved is about equal to all of the federal award programs that the county receives money from. So we either just test the SNAP program and nothing else, or if this doesn't apply, we have to test three or four other smaller programs to get our coverage ratio that we're required to cover. So, and we're having the same problem, like I said, with a couple of the counties as well, where it's significant to their total federal awards, and we've yet to find somebody at the state-level Department of Health and Human Services that can give us a reliable answer, and we're working through that. Once we have that, we'll finish up the single audit and we'll be done.
Okay.
But again, this is, this isn't a county issue. It's a state issue, and the State Department of Health and Human Services providing us supporting guidance for their position and why that seems to be different than the Federal Register guidance.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't think so. There's not anything else that we need to do to improve our internal controls or separation of duties?
Nothing significant. Because I worked through with Crystal and Paddock, I made some suggestions on a small, little basis of things that could be done to help smooth things out a little bit better in reconciling the treasurer's cash, you know, going ahead and adding to the reconciliation all the details that add up to the county's cash, whereas the CDs don't really change from month to month. Just adding that into the schedule so that everybody's familiar with what's going on. Couple of the reconciliation things on the cap assets, detailed software, if you will, and a few things like that. Nothing on the major side that requires any communication, but some small things as we work through the audit. We talked about some areas to improve and things like that.
Sure. Were there any significant issues or noticeable issues with the software conversion that made this any more difficult, I think, or that you could pick up on that we should or should not do with the new software?
Nothing that came to mind as we worked through the process. You know, we've already made plans to accelerate the audit process so that it happens in late spring, early summer, as opposed to more of the late summer or the fall. And we're working through that, and I think we'll be in good shape with there. But I don't recall any hurdles or issues that we had to get over with the software.
Okay.
Not that we couldn't reconcile back to, I think, one of the issues was the depreciation history that was a recording. We were able to tie back into it, but now how to get it to accurately reflect
Okay.
on the Tyler's suggestion was a journal entry, but then it's going to skew all of our balances. So I mean, we were able to tie back into everything with working off the 2020 depreciation schedule and everything there. So.
Okay, cool.
I had a similar question just on that, just because the transition's been so hard.
With the software conversion?
Yeah, communicating with each other across-
I don't think any work with Mr. Hinkle.
Right.
I think internally, like going through some of those year-end things, most definitely things come to light.
By the time we get in, those things have been reconciled and cleaned up.
Yeah.
And so from an audit perspective, we did not have any additional difficulties because of the software conversion.
Okay.
Now, as far as staff, working through the reconciliations and getting prepared for the audit, that's a little bit historic, but from the audit perspective, we did not run into issues where we couldn't audit certain numbers or things like that.
Okay.
That's why I have a little-
Yeah. Do you have anything, Joe?
I have one question. This is probably outside the scope of audit, but I'm just curious. Like, so we're in the process of, like, we have a lot of old buildings that the county owns and operates, and we're in the process of doing like a facility assessment and getting a better handle on deferred maintenance and renovation costs and presumably what that, what those assets are worth or not worth. And I'm just, as we sort of update that, I could imagine that would, like, might lead to restatements of some asset.
Not really. Financial statements are on what we call a historical cost basis.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't adjust capital assets for changes in value. They're recorded at the historical cost and depreciated over its economic useful life. Now, having said that, based upon that analysis that you, the county, does, they invest money into significant repairs, remodels, things of that nature, then that would add to the capital assets value because that's additional cost that's going back into that building. But we don't go through and update for appraised values of land building or any of those types of capital assets. Financial statements are on a historical cost basis.
Okay. That makes sense.
And to go one step further, maybe there's a question out there. And we don't necessarily record any liability for that deferred maintenance unless there is an actual liability incurred that will be paid. So if the county goes through and determines, well, we need a half a million dollars worth of deferred maintenance on these buildings to bring them up to code, to bring them to a useful ability, that amount is not recorded as a liability until you go out and actually incur that cost. incur that cost.
Right.
So that would be an off-balance-sheet liability, if you will, that exists.
Yeah. Okay, that's super helpful to think of it, yeah, yeah.
Cool. Any other questions? Just thank you for working through that.
And thank Crystal and her staff, they have full-time jobs, and we're in addition to that, we're in audit counts, and I peppered her with lots and lots of questions and requests and things like that, and so I appreciate that ability to get to my questions very quickly. The last thing that I think is very important to pass on to the, those charged with governance is throughout the audit process, we and I as an auditor felt like we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for, we were provided in timely fashion, we were never denied information or denied access to supporting documentation, so that we felt like we were able to ask for and get whatever we needed to be able to meet our standards and perform an independent audit. So I think that transparency is extremely important to communicate to the board.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to you and your staff for also taking that on.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the trip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It wasn't real long this time. I came from Frisco, so.
Okay.
With that, I'll just go ahead and leave and let you all get back to more exciting things.
All right. Thank you so much. It was nice to meet you.
All right. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Crystal.
Sure.
Appreciate it. All right, and moving on to item number two, we have a discussion with Erin Pelican, is that correct, Erin?
Yep.
Okay, from the Colorado Department of Transportation on multimodal transfer, sorry, transportation and transit funding, update for us in Lake County. You're welcome to come up to the table or.
Oh, I can just stand.
Okay, sure.
I'll come over here. Hi, everyone, my name is Erin Pelican, I'm with the Division of Transit and Rail. We are a division of CDOT that handles specifically transit, funding, awards, contracts, and then the execution of the funds. And so my division actually is in transit programs. We have Passenger Rail Division, Transit Planning, that is in, that works with a tenure plan that CDOT is developing, bus ops, which includes Bus Stang, Outrider, and Pegasus, which are the routes that, and we're working to expand those routes, so that's a division within the DTR group. And then our Transit Administration Group, which is responsible for awarding, taking in that funding, and then figuring out where the pots of money go. So my particular division is, once the awards have been given and decided, then I see those projects from basically start to completion, from an oversight perspective, and then also seeing those through grant closeout once the funds have been used. So I really just came today because I'm rather new to DTR. I started in August, and my, we are split up by geographical regions, so I have three counterparts that are in the Denver metro area, we have one in the southwest, and then my region is really the intramountain and northwest regions. So I have all of the agencies that are associated with DTR and funding along the I-70 corridor, down to Leadville, up to, out to Glenwood Springs, and then up to Steamboat Springs and Craig's, so basically that northern section is my region. So I'm really here today just to kind of participate in the meeting. I wanted to, to see the, the new local route that Leadville's proposing and kind of drive the route, look at where the stop should be. We are also going to do a little bit with the feasibility study and do some, some project work there. So I'm happy to be here, I may not be able to answer all questions, but I can talk to you a little bit about the funding. I know that Lake County was awarded two MMOF funds, and those are generated, so here's where it gets a little confusing. I, I really run the transit group, so anything with capital, you know, buses, a little bit of overlap with bus facilities. My counterpart, Mark Rogers, is in Region Three, and he's really responsible for, you know, most of the highway work, any kind of roads, that sort of thing. And then we have a construction person that works within our division, Brian Sallar, who primarily works on any construction projects. So bus stops, things like that, I'll probably have oversight to, but the MMOF funds, I don't have specific details on that, that would be Mark, Mark Rogers in Region Three, but I can help answer questions through him. I do know that you were awarded those two funds. I knew, I know that you have funding in for capital. We're still running a little bit behind on awarding capital projects, so we'll, you know, that should be coming, I think, at the end of March, when we make those capital decisions. But the MMOF funds, one question that Tim had for me was whether or not MMOF funds would cover capital, and they do. So you have the option of using that funding or waiting until the capital funding comes through. There have been a lot of delays in supplies and things like that.
Yeah.
So that could add to the decision, but there was also a couple of agencies, I believe, that closed recently that may have had some capital transfer. I'm not sure how those options are really working at this point, so I don't know how viable those are. I'll continue to chase those down, but.
Okay.
But you do have a couple of options where capital is concerned.
Awesome. That's great.
So, any questions? If I can, if I can't answer them, I'll chase them down.
No, I'm just excited to work with you. Tim and I have met with Erin several times, really, on finishing up those details with our feasibility study and then determining how to use MMOF.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting to see that you guys will get a local route. I had a chance to kind of drive around the area, and it looks like it's, you know, needed, and I can see where, you know, the connections of the local route really help the, the community, so.
Yes.
Excited to see it go.
Awesome. Thanks for being here.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's really great to get you out on site, you know, that through our experience with CDOT of rightsizing Harrison Avenue, working with the city and, and other projects, it's, it's kind of that eye-opener of, you know, linemen of roads are just often and really experiencing on the ground.
Yeah.
Physical infrastructure and what that looks like, so I appreciate you coming out.
Yeah. Absolutely happy to help.
Have you been able to connect with everybody that you have to, Erin, either today, you know, to, to look at other things specifically with Public Works or Tim?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I just kind of wanted to, to come up and attend the meeting and then have a couple of conversations with Tim afterwards. That might lead to, to more requests, but at this point.
Okay. Well, hopefully we've been accommodating what you might need before you head out of town today.
Sounds great.
Thanks, Erin.
Do you have anything?
I was just gonna add, I mean, probably obvious, but like you mentioned, like, sort of where the bus stops would go, and that, you know, the other MMOF is the planning for certain of the, like, you know, pedestrian safety and traffic calming and, and other elements along some of the, that overlap some of the places where the route would go. So yeah, just as you, as you drive the route and have conversations the rest of the day, you have sort of have that seed in your, in your head too, about like how to make the bus stops not be islanded somewhere. And yeah.
Yeah, I, I think when, when I was reading through the feasibility study, you had those basically kind of mapped out to an extent, or at least a recommendation for those.
Yeah.
So, you know, I didn't have a chance to really see exactly where those would be, so I would love to see where those are, but to that point, again, that will require, you know, some planning and possibly pulling in Brian Sallar, who is part of construction. I'm not quite sure how that looks, but, but yeah, I'll be the kind of conduit for those opportunities.
Thank you, Erin. Stan, anything?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for coming on.
All right. Great. All right, moving on to number three, which is a Resolution 2302 imposing a temporary moratorium of reasonable duration on submission, acceptance, processing, approval, and of, and approval of, and new land use applications for a conditional use permit or special use permit to operate as an outfitter and guide, which includes utilization of any county roadways within Lake County. And we have this led by our Community Planning and Development Director, Anne Schneider.
Thank you. So we are bringing forth a recommendation for a resolution based on the work that has been done thus far on reviewing OHB use and the continued work and the scope of work that we've talked about, that we'll be doing during the moratorium period. So I would like to present the moratorium resolution to the board, and as such, this is Resolution 2023-02, a resolution imposing a temporary moratorium of reasonable duration on the submission, acceptance, processing, approval of any new land use applications for a conditional use permit or special use permit to operate as an outfitter and guide, which utilizes or includes utilization of any county roadway within Lake County, whereas pursuant to its authority to regulate land use spread in by law, including without limitation, Article 29, Title 29, and Article 28, Title 30, Colorado Revise Statute. Whereas, Lake County has the authority under the Local Government Land Use Control Enabling Act, Article 28, Title 29, Colorado Revise Statute, to impose a temporary moratorium on land use proposals concerning lands within unincorporated Lake County. Whereas, Community Planning and Development has identified an increasing interest in commercial outfitter guide use, which if left unaddressed would result in negative impacts to county roadways, natural resources, and protected areas, as well as threatening public recreational use. And whereas, Lake County has identified an emerging negative impact resulting from an unaddressed need for public and commercial recreational use balance throughout Lake County. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners seek to review the impact of multi-use on county roads in order to establish a transparent, resilient, and sustainable roadway use guide. And whereas, the imposition of an eight-month moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any new land use applications for conditional use permits as an outfitter guide will allow sufficient time to adequately accomplish the review. And whereas, because the county's current rules and regulations may be inadequate to address the emerging negative impact of increased public and commercial recreational use of county roadways, natural resources, and protected areas, the county may suffer irreparable harm if a moratorium, submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any new land use applications. For a conditional use permit to operate as an outfitter or guide, where use is incidental to county roadways is not imposed. And whereas, the duration of the moratorium imposed by this resolution is reasonable in length, so as to allow the county time to properly investigate, develop, and if appropriate, adopt and implement any new or revised regulations deemed necessary with respect to permitting public and recreational use on county roadways in Lake County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County. Section one, upon the adoption of this resolution, a moratorium is imposed upon submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any new land use applications for an outfitter and guide conditional use permit that is incidental to Lake County roadway use. And county staff is directed to refuse or to accept for filing any such applications during the moratorium period. For purposes of this resolution and the moratorium, a new application will be defined as an outfitter or guide who cannot provide proof of a legitimate commercial business within Lake County that has been in operation for a minimum of one year prior to the adoption of this resolution. Section two, the moratorium imposed by this resolution shall commence as of the date of the adoption of this resolution and shall expire eight months thereafter, unless sooner repealed or therefore extended thereafter extended. Upon expiration of the moratorium, all eligible applications shall be processed per existing Lake County rules and regulations. Section three, the Board hereby finds, determines, and declares that an emergent issue exists in relation to the impact of recreational use on county roads in Lake County, and this resolution is necessary and proper for preservation of the public health, wealth, welfare, peace, and safety of the overall Lake County community. The adoption of this resolution on its emergency basis is necessary to avoid further adverse impacts and irreparable negative effects on the quality of life, culture, and environmental areas of Lake County, which is in the best interest of the citizens of Lake County. And section four, this resolution shall effectively become effective immediately upon adoption.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you. I don't think, we haven't had any other comments or significant changes on this.
There are a couple edits, I will bring you back.
Dramatical.
So there were just a couple things that I picked up before I read it.
Correct.
And so, you know, a few little changes and what might be on our computers.
All right, great. And then can you, well, I'll, I'll do my best, but I just want to state again that today, February seventh, we're considering a moratorium. The intention is for the ordinance process to go through a separate process in changing that, and probably go through two iterations at the beginning of this moratorium to set up and create the special use permitting and other considerations that we really need to lay out more clearly through conditional use permitting and special use permitting for outfitter and guide. And, and we'll likely look at a second amendment, or a further amendment, I guess I should say, after the completion of that work to create the special use permitting, and that first reading of the ordinance, the ordinance process goes through a first reading, and then a second reading with public comment, I believe, in a more robust process during a public meeting and hearing, and the first reading will, is intended to be February seven, no, wait, what's, what's our next date?
Twenty-first.
And I don't know if we yet have, do we have a second reading date?
No.
Just following that. Whenever we.
And actually, yes, and in between there, we would like to create an opportunity to take, obviously, like you said, public input, and the first draft will come to the board on, on February twenty-first.
Okay.
And then we'll go through that very vetting process, where we will want to ensure public engagement and take a look on the ordinance itself. And keeping in mind that, that we have several tools here, we'll do the development of the new special use permit, which we've never had before, specific to our use. And unfortunately, we will have to have two iterations of the ordinance, the first at the beginning of the, of the scope of work, and then one at the end after we've really dialed in that use guide for the roadways. So development of several new tools for the county and very flexible tools that can hopefully in perpetuity meet the needs of the board and the community in navigating that use.
Great. And our moratorium set for the eight months was as it says, and I think our best intention or intentions are to have that done sooner than later, specifically to kind of engage with those businesses in the community, hopefully for the summer season.
Absolutely. That is very much the goal of staff, to have a special use permit specifically ready sooner than later, and hopefully you won't need any months. Just given capacity issues, we want to make sure that we allow it for a time.
And, and just to, just to clarify, this is for new applications, defined as an outfitter or guide who cannot provide proof of legitimate commercial business within Lake County operation. That has been in operation for one year prior.
Correct.
Okay. So this is not shutting down businesses that are currently operating, this is, if you're a new business, you have to wait till this process is complete to apply for a conditional use or a special use permit?
That, that is absolutely right.
Okay.
And we are in communication with several of the existing outfitters who either their conditional use permit at the time of when they obtained it, their, their operational plans have changed, areas have changed, and so we're working through existing use with the, the tools that we have today.
Okay. Okay.
So, so sorry to raise, sorry, I had started a discussion on, on Sunday preparing for this, and I hadn't had time to follow up before this meeting, so I apologize for that, but I guess I'm, I'm, you didn't have any discussion about whether there's some flexibility for the situation, is, is raised in public comment of folks who are in pre-application on the current set of rules and would get blocked with the, with the moratorium. So I just to throw out some ideas, I think, you know, from, I'll, I'll say a couple things and I'll let you, that you head me off, Anne, before I go too far, but, you know, I, I, so I guess a question, and again, sorry for not having a chance to discuss this before, whether someone could get like a temporary use permit on the current rules, if they've been in, you know, to my mind, if someone has been in good faith at a certain point through pre-application discussions, I would certainly be sympathetic to them being able to get a temporary use permit, like, during our moratorium, or at least, yeah, just having a discussion on that.
Sure. So I can, I can talk hypothetically, and I can also kind of talk about, you know, and, and make sure that we, in full transparency, so hypothetically, if, if there was a situation by which someone had a base of operation in the, in the city.
in the city and not in the county, then they would just be waiting for the opportunity for the special use permit to be available to them. And so that might potentially be an option to anyone because in reality, with the adoption of the moratorium, there is a ten-day completeness period to review an application to even be accepted, as well as a thirty-day notice period. So there really isn't, with the, if the moratorium is adopted, there's really not an opportunity to carve out a singular opportunity. However, keeping in mind that a conditional use permit is specific to if you have a county base of operation. And then we are in the process, like we talked about, hopefully prior to any kind of summer activity, that we will have a special use permit application that could address guides that their base of operations in the city and wouldn't require a conditional use permit. So there might be some opportunities there for consideration of any operator that may have not been able to go through the application process prior to the moratorium. There may be some opportunity there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, for me, I don't want to do anything that opens up a window where people can sort of just like throw stuff in to like get there, put in the door, if you will, but for people who have, again, who've been operating in good faith and sort of going slow and having good pre-application discussions, I don't want to penalize someone for being a good actor.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. And so we have two different opportunities. If you can show that you had been in operation for a year, that will be an opportunity, as well as if you're able to maintain a base of operation within the city, then we would hopefully, before summer operations, have an opportunity for a special use permit, or we would just be looking at the roadway use versus any other aspect of their operation. So there potentially is an opportunity there to consider somebody that's maybe a bit bigger in thinking here.
Also, I appreciate that conversation, but I also kind of go back to the whole purpose of the moratorium is to, because of capacity issues and to address these things. And, you know, if we were to open a window to accept applications, I know, I mean, you are working on that and on top of trying to get, you know, things in place for the next list of applicants or conversations. And I just don't think that's, that's not fair to you all as staff and also to all the applicants, honestly, because they're going to be potentially treated differently or fall under a different set of rules other than what the board collectively we come up with. But I think our best intention is to, is to meet a shorter timeline than eight months. And in our work session coming up, what, tomorrow or Thursday, let's talk about how we make sure we set our priorities and your time is focused where you need it to be.
That's right. We'll have our discussion on the fifteen. About priorities, we can look at that. But absolutely, we want it to be very transparent and applied fully.
Great. I don't have any other questions for you on the language or the resolution as you read into the record, Ann.
I don't either.
Would you feel, or do you have any?
No, I said that one.
Okay.
My concern.
Okay.
But that discussion was sufficient.
Great. All right, and it is resolution two?
I haven't finished the last meeting, so I have no idea.
All right.
I think it is. Twenty-three, oh two.
All right, well, I am happy to entertain a motion on the resolution as read into the record.
I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three dash oh-two. Resolution imposing a temporary moratorium of reasonable duration on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of new land use applications for a conditional use permit or special use permit to operate as an outfitter and guide, which includes utilization of any county roadway within Lake County.
I'll second.
Right, any further discussion?
No, I don't have any discussion. Thanks for making sure that that point was clear and transparent. Yeah, and I would just encourage anybody that has any questions or comments to reach out to staff.
Yeah. Great, all right, hearing no further comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor, aye.
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 Thank you, Ann, for working on that, and Bryce, much appreciated. I'm going to get back to, right here. All right, moving on to item number four, we have consideration of contract with CBS Accounting for the twenty-two and three, or for year twenty-two and three. Our finance director, Crystal, will present that to us.
Sure, so it's the annual agreement we've had with CBS Accounting since I've been here and anything prior to that as well. Christine provides some oversight with reconciliations with DHS, as well as the treasurer and the finance office as well, just to make sure that everything is recorded accurately, so that we are doing our due diligence and preparing those financial statements ultimately for the audit process. I don't know if you want me to read the entire agreement?
No.
No, it's in the.
I would like coming on it in terms of looking at the draft that you sent. Unfortunately, it was an old draft, and the version that was signed last year had some modifications to it that weren't picked up in the draft that you sent over for this year.
Did I grab the wrong one?
So I meant to grab.
So we'll have the right one for y'all to sign that they signed last year. It's the same thing. They accepted the changes last year, so it's the same.
Perfect, sorry, I grabbed the right one.
That's all right. So I've got that for y'all to sign.
Great.
And I didn't have, in terms of with the changes they accepted all last year and signed off on, there weren't any issues. I think the only changes for this year, though, would just increase fees and some side effect in per diem references.
Yes, yeah, the hourly fee is slightly, but we do have the not to exceed clause in there of the decay without prior approval from the board or Tim. So yes, we will get the correct version. Yeah, I tried really hard to make sure I had the correct one, so, but the scope of work has not changed as far as any of the oversight with some reconciliations and whatnot. Go ahead.
I just, as a point of context, sitting in Crystal's seat before this meeting, and what the auditor was talking about is this adds to our internal controls and separation of duties, so that there's an additional check on financials that are happening on a monthly basis and reconciliations that are happening on a monthly basis to gather that cumulative information for the audit. So it adds that additional internal control for us to add to that transparency that our auditor talked about, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, great. Thanks. I don't have any questions for you either. So with the updated contract, which we do have, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the contract with CBS Accounting for twenty-two and three.
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the contract with CBS Accounting for twenty-two and three.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great, thank you, Crystal.
Sure. I'm just, I'm going to end up to you, Rev.
Okay, and this one, I actually printed off the packet that Tim prepared, so I don't know if it's, might be.
It's not the same one.
Okay.
Well, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, appreciate it, thanks so much. All right, on to item number five, and we have the consideration of a lease with John W. Brink of one forty South Toledo Avenue, an amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars, and this will be led by our county attorney, Crystal.
Yes, thank you. So this lease is one that was assigned to the county through its acquisition of the Justice Center property down the end, and it has been in place for a long time, where essentially the Brinks lease a sliver of the property to use for a driveway purpose and such. They have indicated an interest in purchasing that property, but my recommendation has been in the past that we keep the lease that's in place now until we finish, finalize what the plans are and such, and we look at what the options would be, spoken to and previously about the process we need to go through in terms of having to subdivide and all that kind of stuff. And my thought at this point in time that I need to talk to the Brinks about is perhaps once it gets to a point where you want to move away from the lease, to perhaps create an easement or access, you know, for them to use that without having to go through the full subdivision process and stuff like that. So that's kind of where it is. But there are no changes that I'd recommend to the lease. It was written by Union Pacific, so it's pretty tight, and in the county's favor, so I don't think there's anything we need to do unless they have some concern. The rent hasn't increased. There is the option to increase it beyond the seven hundred and fifty dollars based on the sliver that they're getting. I don't necessarily know that it increases in order, but we can certainly take that back to them if they all would like to.
Back to Union Pacific?
No, no, it's ours now. The lease was assigned to the county, so it's ours now, and so to the Brinks to see if y'all wanted to try to increase the rent. There's the option to do that under the lease, but no, that's.
I would, I mean, I would just say maintain what we have, and if you're comfortable with those terms, that sounds great. And I think, again, kind of back to our capacity issues as well, and not necessarily having plans for the property solidified. I think the easiest thing, it seems like, is to allow that access to continue and to just formally.
I was going to see if there was a map or something that showed where, but it truly is, it's in the northeastmost, I think, corner of the property, and it's, so it's above the startage, it's an area that's unlikely the county will need to use.
Right.
But I think it's just prudent to wait until the plans and such are finalized for that parcel before y'all decide what to do with that scale.
Yep.
So is the seven fifty what they currently pay to Union Pacific?
No, to us. They've actually paid that since we, the county purchased the property. And so it's just an annual seven hundred and fifty dollar charge for the lease for them to use it as a driveway.
Ann, you've communicated with?
In terms of the, I mean, I know they've communicated with Tim.
I've communicated with Charles on this, but I haven't made it yet.
So, yeah, and then I think maybe with your daughter, perhaps, too, or someone else in your family that had asked.
My son.
Or your son, somebody, a woman called, but anyway, so, but in terms of, you know, the recommendation at this point in time, just to kind of keep things status quo for now, and so a final decision to make for that. Do you have any objection?
No to that.
Great, great.
That's my recommendation.
All right, seems pretty straightforward for now. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I will make a motion to approve a lease with John Brink of one forty South Toledo Avenue in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Great, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me.
Nothing for me, all the, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and item number six, consideration of engagement letter with Hinkle and Company P.C. to audit the financial statements of Lake County Government for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Go ahead, Crystal, I suppose this is.
Sure, so Hinkle had, Hinkle and Company had sent a letter once we completed the twenty-one audit for engagement of the twenty-two financial statements. So it has my name on it, but I told, I did let Mr. Hinkle know, we might have to present to the board for review and finalization. I do know that with the resolution for the beginning of the year, you did select Hinkle and Company to be the auditor, so I don't see any issue with giving this sign. It is a seven, eight, nine, ten-page letter. Would you like me to?
No, we don't have to.
So I'll just read the first paragraph.
Sure.
That works, and it's just, it says, "We are pleased to confirm our understanding of the services we will provide to the Lake County, to Lake County Government, the county. We will audit the financial statements of the government activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining fund information, and the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise of the financial statements of the county as of the year and December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. In addition, they will also audit the entity's compliance over major federal award programs for the period ending in December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, if required." And then the letter just goes on to their duties, our duties, and then there's a signature.
And I haven't reviewed it enough, I didn't have any concerns. It's a standard engagement letter for the type of services they're offering, so I don't have any concerns with them.
Great. Um, do we, is it, are you concerned, sorry, does the single audit from twenty-twenty-one and the lack of response or direction from the state and that completion going to prevent the start on the twenty-twenty-two process?
No, because a single audit is separate.
Okay.
From the other audit.
Yeah, is it only, a single audit is only auditing federal grant money?
Those federal, yeah, those federal grant dollars.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't impact a state, you know, getting those completed.
Or independent audit, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they were anticipating, started, you know, starting up as soon as possible and so.
Yes, later, later this spring, we have, since we've just completed W-two's and ten-nine-nines, now we will begin those year-end adjusting entries, so we can start compiling all the audit work papers and get working on that with Mr. Hinkle.
Okay, great.
Sounds good.
Very good.
I will make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Hinkle and Company P.C. to audit the financial statements of Lake County Government for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great. All right, on to item number seven, consideration of a liquor license renewal for Tennessee Pass Cook House Incorporated, and this was information presented to us from the clerk's office. Cindy, any objections, reports, concerns?
Not worded to your office.
None regarding the renewal? Okay, great, and payments and fees have been made?
Yes, yes.
Everything's?
Everything's ready to go.
Excellent, all right, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the liquor license renewal for Tennessee Pass Cook House Incorporated.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Thank you very much, Cindy. All right, and eight, consideration of fully lending agreement with Levela Lake County Regional Housing Authority, led by Tim Bergman, who just walked out of her room. So this is just.
She's coming back now.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Tim, we're on item eight, for lending agreement with the Regional Housing Authority and staffing.
Sure, so the, prior to the Board of County Commissioners and City Council creating the Regional Housing Authority, the position of housing director was jointly funded through the city and county. Now that the Regional Housing Authority is established, that funding mechanism is still in place. However, the Regional Housing Authority Director, it reports to that board now, so the proposal is to lend that county employee, essentially H.R.I.T. benefits, those kind of things to the Regional Housing Authority. And the agreement with Regional Housing Authority is that they follow, you know, they follow our performance with the county's established performance review processes, things like that, to evaluate the director's work.
Okay, excellent. And our, the Housing Authority has accepted?
Oh, yes, and the Housing Authority has accepted this and voted on it.
Any questions from the fellow commissioners?
I don't, I mean, that sounds like what we already always envisioned is how things were going to work administratively, so.
I agree, no questions.
Yeah, no questions.
Very straightforward.
All right.
I will make a motion that we approve the employee lending agreement with the Levela Lake County Regional Housing Authority.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Shifting back to the agenda. Okay, item nine, consideration of a letter of support for the DOLA grant application for the Levela Lake County Regional Housing Authority. So this is for our infrastructure grant that we have been working really hard on in collaboration with a lot of partners, including the city. And Jackie Willahan, who is the Housing Director of the Housing Authority, has submitted our grant. That deadline was January 31st. We did supply a letter of support and just want to ratify and acknowledge that, that we have, we've hit our deadline and, and we, well, we first were invited and we were awarded the first kind of round of grant funding to explore possible sites and do engineering and feasibility of sites, little down to the project that we did submit for. And I am not certain what our anticipation of hearing back from DOLA might be, but.
March.
March, okay. But that has been submitted. And I believe we all signed it.
Yes.
I don't know that we need a formal, a formal approval or ratification of that, but just to let everybody know that, that, you know, those drafts were shared and Jackie worked really hard on, on getting that done for us. So we, we appreciate it.
Just as a form of, I want to suggest, correct, that you go on, since it's on the agenda to essentially.
Okay. Okay.
Consider the letter, and since it had to be done before today's meeting, so y'all didn't have a chance to discuss it in public. So I would just suggest moving to ratify the letter.
Sounds, sounds good, no harm. I'll understand motion to ratify the letter of support for our DOLA infrastructure grant.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
Just, as you said, note that we did actually all sign the, the letter, so, great work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Awesome, all right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great, and moving on to item 10, we have Resolution 23 dash, dash, zero three. Do we go on the property located at 428 East 12th Street from industrial mining to commercial industrial? Now, Mola Community Planning and Development take the lead on that? And it looks like Bryce is teed up to do that.
Yes, I apologize, it's a little, it's my first time doing my lease.
No worries.
So, but yeah, I'm going to do this on behalf of Ann, Ann Community Planning and Development Department. So first up, I just want to clarify that item 10, we actually have two resolutions to consider on this. There is a concurrent resolution of the rezoning of the, of the county-owned animal shelter parcel from industrial mining to commercial industrial and a concurrent code amendment change to allow government animal shelters in the commercial industrial zone district. So on January 9th, we have a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of this file, which is File 22 dash 43. And there was a joint hearing, but after the commissioners left, there was no further deliberation from the Planning Commission. They went directly to moving to vote. So unless you have any other questions, I can go ahead and read that statement of motion and those two resolutions.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either. I just think on, just for clarification on the agenda, there listed as two separate agenda items.
Sorry, there's, actually, there's three resolutions.
Okay.
There's two agenda items, the first agenda item will do two resolutions and we'll follow that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, thank you for the clarification of this. So we'll just go ahead, state the motion and move resolutions. For File number 22 dash 43, at its January 9th, 2023 joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commission made, seconded and approved by a roll call vote of four members in favor and zero members in opposition. The following motion, the motion having been made by Joey Edwards and seconded by Abby Dahlman. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of File 22, number 22 dash 43 to the Board of County Commissioners, a rezoning of Big L's Mini Storage Parcel, Assessor Account R 000374 and the B O C C Animal Shelter Parcel, Assessor Account R 002477, from industrial mining to commercial industrial, making the following findings. A, that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. The Lake County Planning Commission made, seconded and approved by a roll call vote of four members in favor and zero members in opposition. The following motion, the motion having been, having been made by Abby Dahlman and seconded by Howard Tritts, I move the Planning Commission recommend approval of File number 22 dash 43, a code amendment to Section 5.1 Use Table, allowing government animal shelters as an allowed use by right in the commercial industrial zone district to the Board of County Commissioners and that a resolution be prepared to memorialize that decision, making the following findings. A, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies and other provisions of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and this code. And B, the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts and other social and economic conditions. And C, the proposal is within the best interests of the health, safety and general welfare of the general public. And the language of those resolutions, Resolution 23 dash 03, fast, a resolution to rezon the property known as 428 East 12th Street from an I M industrial mining to C I commercial industrial. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, State of Colorado, is vested with administering the affairs of Lake County, Colorado pursuant to state statutes. And whereas pursuant to CRS 29 dash 20 dash 102, Section 1, the legislator, legislature has determined that in order to provide or plan an orderly development within Colorado, that broad authority must be provided to local governments, including counties, to plan for and regulate the use of land within their respective jurisdictions. And whereas pursuant to CRS 30 dash 28 dash 111, Section 1, the legislator has determined that local county governments may make a zoning plan for zoning all or any part of the unincorporated territory within such county. And whereas the county is in receipt of the land use and development application, File number 22 dash 43, for 428 East 12th, Assessor Account R 002477, requesting a rezoning from industrial mining, I M to commercial industrial, C I. And whereas said parcel is not all of the essential requirements pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code, Section 3.13 rezoning. And whereas pursuant to Resolution 2009 dash 03, Lake County encourage commercial industrial zoning by significantly reducing the minimum lot size from 20 acres to 2 acres. Lake County recognizes the importance of industrial land and uses to support the community. And whereas the Lake County Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners held a joint public, joint public hearing on this matter on the 9th of January, 2023. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has considered the recommendations of the Lake County Planning, Building and Land Use Department and the Planning Commission, the Community Development and Planning Department. And therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake and State of Colorado that pursuant to Section 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code, Section 1, the proposed rezoning is found to be consistent with and in compliance with all parts of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Section 2, this resolution shall become effective upon the signing by the Board of this resolution and a subsequent recording of it. So that's the first resolution of 2303. And the subsequent attached resolution of 2304 for a code amendment. A resolution amending the Lake County Land Development Code to allow government animal shelter as a use by right under Table 5.1 Commercial Retail Sales and Services. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners and the County of Lake, State of Colorado, Board is vested and administered, with administering the affairs of Lake County, Colorado pursuant to state statutes. And whereas pursuant to Section 3.8.2, Section A of the Lake County Land Development Code, amendments to the various provisions of the code may be proposed by a private individual, organization, community planning and development staff, the Planning Commission, or by the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas pursuant to CRS 29 dash 20 dash 102, Section 1, the Colorado General Assembly finds and declares that in order to provide the planned and orderly development within Colorado and for a balancing of basic human needs and a changing population with legitimate environmental concerns, the policy of this state is to clarify and provide broad authority to local governments to plan for and regulate use of land within their respective jurisdictions. And whereas pursuant to CRS 30 dash 28 dash 113, the Board of County Commissioners, upon consideration by the Planning Commission, may regulate the zoning map and text after public hearing thereon in those portions of the county that lie outside of cities and towns. And whereas pursuant to CRS 30 dash 28 dash 111, Section 1, the legislator has determined that local county governments may make a zoning plan for zoning all or any part of the unincorporated territory within such county. And whereas the Lake County Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners held a joint public hearing on the land use file, number 22 dash 43, on the 9th day of January of 2023. And whereas pursuant to Section 3.8 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission shall make a recommendation based on the approval criteria of Section 3.8.9 of the Land Development Code. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has considered the recommendations of the County Planning and Development, Community Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds that the foregoing amendments to the Lake County Land Development Code are consistent with the goals, objectives, policies and other provisions of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code are necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts or other social or economic conditions. And will promote the public and environmental health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of Lake County. And now therefore be resolved that Section 1, this resolution is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies and other provisions of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. Section 2, this resolution is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts and other social and economic conditions. Section 3, this resolution is bound to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Section 4, the Lake County Land Development Code shall be amended to add government animal shelter as a use by right within the conditional, commercial industrial, C I zone district at Table 5.1, permitted, conditional and prohibited uses by zone district. And Section 5, this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption and the Land Development Code shall be amended accordingly and immediately. Take a breath.
I do have a question, sorry to have to ask, but we did not notice the second resolution on our agenda of the table of use changes. So can we entertain the rezone resolutions and put the table of use changes on our next meeting?
No, because actually they, they have to be done concurrently because to rezon that Board of County Commissioner parcel to commercial industrial, it would have a noncompliant use on it, which is that government animal shelter. So if you're rezoning to Z I, you have to allow that use in C I.
We can't rezone to a non, to a noncompliant use, so that's why they're together. So we need to tear the decision on, on all of, all agenda items 10 and 11.
I think we're going to have to do that.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
I'm really sorry.
I only had to the specific.
All those that you guys. But I will, I will, I will do it again.
Is there like an operational issue with delaying two weeks? Or, 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 I mean, we could schedule a special meeting.
We can do a special meeting.
Special meeting this week.
Yeah.
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 We can do a special meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
Because that puts some of the other applicants involved. It would be great to just wrap things up for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry for not noticing that earlier.
I just saw the two.
Apologize, Chris. There's been one thing.
It's Thursday. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
It's just special because it's not on our regular occurrence. It's not special because of who's invited. I mean, we're all.
Okay. Okay, so.
Any chance you could end it early for the meeting? Is there a way to do it before, after, or what, after the beginning of the session?
Yes. Can we add those two liquor licenses for 13 to 14?
Sure.
Okay.
Brian, I'm available.
I don't think I can do earlier than 8:30, sorry.
8:30?
I think.
Sorry, wait, I thought you were asking me to go earlier.
I'd say earlier than noon.
Oh, we're session.
I mean, can we take 30 minutes?
8:30, or can we do from 9 to 9:30?
Yeah.
Or 8:30 to 9:00.
8:30 and 9 is good, I just can't do 8, 8:30.
Okay.
Okay.
Starts on Thursday from.
Thursday from eight, at 8:30. And then we do the, with the, we would do the table of uses as a first resolution for consideration. 428 East 12th is the second, and then 506 is it?
500.
500 as the third resolution.
Okay.
That day.
You'll be ready to hear it all again.
I'm sorry, Bryce. Okay. All righty. Well, with that realization, items 10 and 11 will be tabled to Thursday, February 9th at 8:30 in the morning to a special meeting for consideration. We'll post that and we'll move on to item number 12, a consideration of contract for engineering services for 2023 with S E H Incorporated. Short Elliot Hendrickson to be the county's contract engineer. And this is also led by Ann Schneider of our Community Planning and Development.
So S E H has been the county's engineer, architect, planner and surveyor professional services for, I'm going to say, well over a decade. They provide critical support to the department. They do all of our land use application review that requires engineering review. And so some of that expense is for by the department and some of that is a pass or expense to our applicants. But the only difference, I think Chris had, had sent an email that I haven't reviewed.
It was just some minor tweets. Yeah, there's some, some minor tweets and type of current, current intake stuff. So there wasn't anything substantive. And so I think it, it's fine to, to present a quote, a favorable thing. And there, I guess there were the changes.
Yeah, okay, that sounds great. And, and just like Crystal's professional service contract and probably typical, there is a slight increase in the hourly rate. S E H has communicated many times with staff this past year that they too are in that same difficult hiring position. And so they've had to try to increase wages to bring about more capacity. So there, there is a little bit of an increase in the hourly. They do try to keep review to certain members of their team that are maybe not of the highest pay rate to keep things more economical for us. I would also just offer that we've been looking at our professional service contracts. And this is one contractor that we work with that really listens to us when we try to, or when we want to encourage a certain scope and not going to run and not over-incurring cost. So that has been, I felt, you know, very effective. And so very interested in continuing this engagement.
Okay, yeah, I wrote that, noted that to chat through with you guys in the work session, in the upcoming work session, just on contract review and how that's going. And then all the engineering work is an expense to the applicant, passed on to the applicant, correct?
Correct, and in most, most, there are times I will say that we have called it in in the public comment that we received today about the work that's being done on Highway 24. We have sent that for a second engineering opinion, all that work is being engineered. But we did, so there are times that we, that we utilize their services, particularly in instances where we think there's any kind of safety concern. And so that's a really, obviously a very valuable resource.
Great. Well, I don't have any other questions for you, Ann, on this. Anything from the board?
No, I don't have any questions.
Right. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the contract for engineering services for 2023 with S E H Incorporated.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Thank you. And moving on to 13, discussion and updates on the Community Justice Center project. Pass this one over to you, Commissioner Feebler.
Yeah, actually, if you can pull up, I, I sent just a couple short, very short documents to the V S C C room, you know. And while I do that, so I think the purpose of this, we, we had a previous, I think, work session, discussion, yeah, maybe the. Yeah, that's, that's a good place to start.
Stay there, okay.
Yeah. So we talked about the, the really kind of heart-stopping price increases at previous meeting and sort of four paths that we're pursuing on how to adjust to that.
Um, so that these first four bullets are the four pathways that we discussed to pursue. Um, so I'll go to that, but I think the, the purpose of this discussion is to just make sure, since we are, you know, since we are going in some new directions of, of exploring options, just make sure the three of us are all kind of on the same page, and that we're giving this clear direction to Tim, to Chris, um, and to the owner's rep, um, uh, D P M as, as, as possible, and all, uh, people on the design team. Um, so, um, uh, so just to quickly review, um, the, yeah, so I, I don't think there's any, like, vote or decision or, you know, but more just to see if anything's missing from this, um, that you want explored in any of these options. So the four options is to review, so we're gonna tap the brakes on rushing to break ground in the twenty-three construction season. Um, uh, going to keep the current design, you know, more or less as is, um, and it's, and keep thinking about delaying one year or more years. Um, the purpose there just being to have more time to see if there's, you know, value engineering, and particularly a large driver of the costs was sort of twenty to thirty percent above expected cost estimates from the whole range of subcontractors. Um, so to see if the, um, you know, broth comes off the subcontractor market, um, in, in some period of time. Um, but again, sort of, you know, keeping the work that's been done, you know, um, uh, alive, the third bullet there is, um, again, on the current proposed sort of Monroe Chestnut U V site, but can we build it in phases or do another round of the scoping, which is a, you know, bureaucratic word for building less? Um, uh, and then the fourth is, is, is really, you know, just taking a hard look again at whether this large, very large facility on a new site is doable, and, and what are the other options to provide necessary community services um, at this current courthouse and annex building site? So, uh, maybe just to scroll down a little bit more up to overarching tasks. I just, um, yeah, so, some of this was in the previous document we looked at, but I think this overarching task is like things that, so they just say all four of those, those pathways are things we're gonna look at. Um, there, there, this is not a choice of one or the other, um, is what I think our consensus view was. So our overarching tasks, um, that are necessary, um, I, I don't know, I mean, I can go through this, I don't know how much time you want to take. Um, or, we just wanna skim through, but I think, you know, with, with, with these changes, we're definitely gonna have to look. Um, oh, sorry, I should say contracts, not contractors. So, you know, the current design team, you know, our owner's rep contract are all gonna need to have a look at, um, being modified in some way to accommodate exploring these four steps. Um, you know, some of them might really involve some significant amendments to their scope or a need to go out for a new R F E on some of that examination work. Um, I think particularly the, the newer, bigger ones of like reexamining this current courthouse site, I mean, that, that, that's a completely new scope.
Yeah.
Um, so I have some more detail on that down, but, um, you know, I think this also gives, you know, Tim and Crystal, you know, and others time to keep looking at our, you know, long-term, you know, longer-term financial planning, both on expenses and revenue, and sort of maybe get to a, a place of having some more confidence in what the, what those projections look like. Um, uh, work with the sheriff's office and others on sort of operational issues from, you know, having to tap the brakes, and also some of the phasing de-scoping stuff. So definitely like circling back, um, with the, um, stakeholders and building the dispense. Um, and then also, we had secured ten, over ten million dollars of, of, uh, grant funding and other contributions, so we need to go back to all of those sources. Um, and just make sure we're not falling afoul of terms, whether they can be, you know, extended, um, to accommodate what we're looking at. And, and also, I think, I really clearly understand, if we do start to de-scope or do something different, at what point do we lose that grant?
Mm-hmm.
Sure is it, um, that, I think, I think tho- those sort of apply to all pathways in going down, the sort of tapping the brakes, I just think there's, I, I, I think, you know, this is all kind of in the works with the owner's rep. Um, uh, we're even couldn't make it, uh, to this session today, um, but I think the, the main ones are, um, giving the general contractor and the design team a bit more chance to look and see if there are some cost savings. Um, we were on a very tight, aggressive schedule to hit the twenty-three construction season, so we need to take a little bit of a breath and be like, is there a smarter way to do certain things? No one thinks that's gonna save more than a million, on a sixteen thousand dollar project. I mean, they've already poked and prodded pretty hard. Um, that's not gonna save ten million dollars. Um, uh, um, also just tie, there's like a lot of loose ends, um, shape and stepped out, but we will continue with the city permitting process, for example. Um, so the, that long list of sub-bullets onto, you can sort of scroll, keep scrolling down. Continue city permitting, continue the federal requirements for the large federal earmark grant we got. It's N E P O one oh six State Historical Preservation Office. Um, um, M M P is the material management plan, so we're, we have an initial plan in with C D P H E on how we're going to control the remaining contamination on-site. So I think we, you know, just, again, we can get to a point where things can, can sort of sit on the shelf well, and we don't, you know, lose work in progress. Uh, road access with C dot, um, oh, we're, we're Monroe and Chestnut have some legal issues to keep working on. Um, uh, C dot access, material management plan, sorry to zoom over a lot here. Um, I think I merged two lists of to-do items and didn't fully scrub them.
No, right.
Um, continuing to work with utility connections, um, including, I think, gathering information on that big choice of whether to go electric or electric gas. Um, uh, and then also going as far as makes sense on underwriting and financing, and see if we get to the point of understanding what, you know, what, I mean, can we borrow thirty-five million through the C R P process, and just again, continue. Make sure, I think there, the goal is just to make. We don't leave any surprises to be discovered later on, that we keep doing our homework. But again, not go further into construction documents, um, that wastes money if, if this isn't a project we pursue soon. Um, so that's it, I'm tapping the brakes, trying to keep scrolling down a little bit more. Um, delay, you know, essentially the same design. I think this is sort of everything above, but just a little bit more, um, yeah, uh, long-term financial analysis, um, again, a little bit more to discuss, um, some of those, uh, cost savings or modifications. Um, then moving down to phasing de-scoping is more major stuff, but again, looking at this, at, at the same design, the same site. Actually, if you wanna go back to the email, there is a, I think a PDF or a yes, yeah. Maybe, yeah, that's good, so, I mean, you can just see on, on here, yeah, sorry, oh, yeah, I could. Um, so, this, this in sort of, what color that is? Salmon?
Coral.
Coral, um, is the detention, you know, jail and supporting functions. This is, uh, city police and sheriff's office, future law enforcement. This is the two courtrooms, um, and sort of entryway up here. So, so this is just an initial take on what phasing looks like, you know, like the jail is the statutory requirement, um, and what is sort of m- most deficient, um, and costing us money to do the transport, so, you know, phasing could just build the jail first, so I think this is a beginning, the work from the, from the design team on what phasing works. And de-scoping, you know, like if we just aren't building one of these three blocks on the site. Um, and sort of, you know, you could, you could bid it as detention with this as an add-alternate. Yeah, so, just noodling around, so, um, back to. Um, so again, I think this, this is, this will, there, uh, you know, someone will need to facilitate that discussion of all the, like, operational um, trade-offs, you know, what is, what, you know, if we start to phase or de-scope, what community service are we not going to be providing? Um, what does that do to the sheriff's office and the court operations? Um, or, or city police who have been planning to be part of this building. Um, and, um, and I think also, yeah, also operational pros and cons in terms of we've been anticipating some space freed up in this building, and that would then not be available to us for that timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, as I ramble on and on with these bullets, the purpose is if I'm forgetting, if, if, if Tim, Chris, me, Colleen, any, or if we're forgetting questions that need to be asked.
No, I, I mean, I think you touched on everything, and it seems to me that the, the, like we talked about in our last work session, wrapping up a lot of processes that you're working on right now to a point, as you said, that can sit well on the shelf, and then initiating a few other ones that are true new kind of opportunity pursuits. Um, those seem to be kind of the next big new steps, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I am curious, well, one, one, not specific to the construction of the project, but as we chatted last time about other ways that we can get two ports into operation or some other efficiencies going, um, we had a long list of conversations and have, uh, partners to reach out to. Um, I think you're, are you on the schedule tomorrow evening with the city?
Yeah.
With the planning commission? I just wonder if we don't kind of drop seeds on some of those thoughts, if we haven't already with the city. Um, it, maybe it's not.
I don't think planning and zoning, you know, the people to drop that on.
I, yes, you are right. I agree. I agree, I agree. Sorry, I forgot, they are just planning and zoning, it is not council, they're clearly there, so, yeah.
Uh, no, that, 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 um, great, that is a good thing that's not reflected on here, sort of other creative ways to get that additional court capacity in.
I don't remember if we created that list. Do we have that list living somewhere?
I, no, I think this is that list.
This is that list, yeah.
I think that was kept in our brains and notes, and then this, this will become the master to-do list. And I started wrapping out, like, who, you know, is it Tim, is it Chris on a legal issue, is it Colleen? Um, and then maybe just, yeah, so I think, then, then this last one, explore options of the current courthouse and annex, that's really, you know, essentially putting this project on the shelf, um, because we just can't do it. Um, and looking at what can be done in, I think, a more piecemeal fashion, uh, here at this site. So I think these two bullets, I, I think we don't currently have a really strong facility assessment of this building and the annex, like, that really gets into the current structural state, mechanical state, like, what would it really, what, what can the building support? And what would it take to renovate or add on? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think that's where, then that's the second bullet. I think we need to do the facility assessment to know what, I mean, like, if you add in, if you add an addition onto this building and make a campus, can the current cell line support that? Can the sewer line support it? You know, like, we need those answers with some rough cost estimates. You know, there is mi- million or two million, like, you know, literally just, you know, is this a two million dollar project or a ten million dollar project kind of level? But we need that, that structural and mechanical assessment of the current buildings to support bullet two, which is, yes, that master plan of what a campus here could look like. And digging out, I mean, there's some really good stuff in the two thousand and twenty sixteen master plans of some ideas, like, you know, putting a parking level in out here and building above some covered parking, um, you know, on the park over here, so you don't lose our existing parking. So, um, I think we need to, um, I think that really is something that we need to get. Um, and I think we can have D P M advise us on how to go, so that, I think that's a big enough body of work to, to work on and facilitate that campus idea that we need an R F E on that.
Okay.
So that's that list, yeah. The master plan options.
To, I don't, uh, I think, like, continuing on the conversations of just educating lessons, C O P. I think we're gonna have to do that regardless.
Yeah.
And I know, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember if you included that in the top part of the list, but that is probably.
Yeah.
Just something to.
Tim's on it.
Yeah. I thought we talked about that last name.
Yeah, and I think one thing I don't know yet, but we can just ask, is like, how, I mean, how far into that underwriting, you know, C O P process can you go? If you aren't actually gonna hit go on the financing in, you know, end of first quarter? Like, presumably there's some point where they don't want to do ridiculous amounts of work and going up to bid on stuff, or, you know, sell our C O Ps if, if we're not there yet.
Okay, and maybe, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, because I think in, in any of these options, I can't imagine us signing on the dotted line for financing within nine or twelve months at this point.
Right, 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 I don't think so either. Yeah, I would imagine our conversations are, are less technical and more broader scope of, you know, what, what are we doing to improve our financial.
Yeah.
Position as an entity, um, and maybe even more internal conversations about other revenue generation potential, um, to strengthen that, but.
And, and that last sentence you just said is what I meant by, you know, giving, you know, Tim and Dallas and Crystal more time to keep doing the long-term revenue and expense projection, you know, that we're, we're asking every department to do that. It was really good this year, but not perfect, and we're just gonna keep knowing more. I mean, in nine or twelve months, we'll, we'll know more.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll be more or less confident on borrowing X million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, right, because I mean, the big sticking point is, you know, maybe we can stomach two million a year financing costs, not three.
Yeah.
You know, so in a year, we'll know more, and maybe two million seems crazy, and we're glad we didn't do it.
Right.
Um, or we're like, oh, no, actually, like, we can, you know, we found these savings or whatever. So, yeah. Um, but again, I think, I mean, I think this, you know, these last two are the, the facility assessment and then the master plan, I think those are two new big projects that really aren't remotely in the current scope of work of people, so we're gonna need to do, and I think that's a question for Colleen and Chris, is sort of like, what, what, what can we modify under the existing contracts we're under with people, and what do we need to get help on going out with either a professional service or a full R F E process? Um, because I don't think we've answered that yet.
Right. Okay.
Um, and again, you know, we, and we also haven't had the discussion of putting price tags on either of those two bullets, so.
Sure.
Um, I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, I'm assuming that getting engineers in to look at systems is gonna start quickly getting into the tens of thousands of dollars easy. And I think the second bullet is probably, depending on how deep you go into it, but if you get to the point of some actual rough site plans and some cost numbers on those, that's probably a hundred K kind of analysis.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's what I would expect, but definitely necessary and helpful.
So, I think so. Yeah, yeah.
This is very helpful, and I know we went through all of that, but I appreciate new lists and revised lists and.
Um, yeah, no, and, and great, I mean, so, yeah, and, and again, this is like a living list, so whenever you think of something, you can add it.
Okay, yeah.
Um, the municipal court and other ways, other ways to.
To meet, like, the.
Yeah.
Intent of what the Justice Center was going to, how the Justice Center was gonna serve the community. Yeah, let's figure out other ways to, to do our best to, to meet that.
Yeah, well, the other thing that's on here is like how to get me some help in updating the project website, which is now virtually outdated.
I took a note of that. I took a note of that, I think we can get updates to it this week.
Yeah. I don't think it requires the creation of a lot of new content, it's more sort of like figuring out like how, how much to put on, how to restructure the tabs and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything you need from us for tomorrow? Or do you want us to?
I don't think so, there, yeah, so, so tomorrow is the preliminary hearing with planning and zoning. The staff report was really good in, I mean, like our staff reports, they're either this project does meet these criteria or it could use some improvements. The, the only areas flagged by city planning staff were is like some snow storage modifications and maybe some better privacy fences around those, like, secure parking, like where prisoners are coming in. I really don't think there was any, there was nothing about, you know, major about traffic or where things sit on the site. So I, but it will be the first time full planning and zoning, we did a very informal work session with them months ago, but it'll be the first time full planning and zoning has seen the external renderings, you know, seen what the front plaza looks like, going to the outdated things come.
And per their process, this is a pre, pre-application queue.
Application is in.
Application is in.
So this is before the formal hearing.
Okay.
Before the formal public hearing.
Yeah. So this is a first chance for P and Z to respond to the staff report and our full application.
Okay.
Which is in your inbox somewhere. I can't, it's not, I mean, yeah. I'm not sure if we're just that forward. Yeah, so no, and, and I think our, like, we're anticipating like a five-minute maximum presentation. I'll give like one or two minutes on like why the county is building this and what community needed meets. The, and the architects will talk for hopefully only two or three minutes on the external renderings and sort of, you know, the architect's side of it, and then the mechanical folks will talk about things like utilities and sewer, stormwater, traffic.
Great. Cool. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Any other questions? None for me, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, maybe a question to Tim and Chris, I don't know if we sort of, I feel like we maybe need to schedule like a meeting with Colleen and, and like, and sort of four of us to like sit down with this and sort of assign tasks and deadlines. So there, somewhere else talk, if you didn't, if you, if you didn't assign a person and a deadline, then you didn't actually assign the task.
Sheriff, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't think there's any delays with this change. I think these are appropriate steps, so just have to have them on board.
Thanks. All right. Much appreciated, question for you, that's great.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah. All right. And final list of new items on our agenda, we do have bills and payroll reports and minutes after this item, but our final item on the agenda is to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4F.I. For the purpose of discussing the annual performance review of the county manager. And CRS 24-6-402-4E, for the purpose of receiving information and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Invited into executive session will be county attorney and the county manager. Happy to entertain a motion to move into executive session and, or also I'll look at staff and those left in the room that might have any signatures. All right, before we go in there, great.
Can we, can we take like?
Sure, yeah, let's take a five-minute break. Five-minute break, or why don't we come back at one? Well, yeah, that's five minutes.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right, I will, sorry. Okay, we're gonna come back at one and then for those of you on Zoom, we customarily do an Zoom meeting when we go into executive session because we do not leave this room and then we restart when we come back into, into session.
Michael, Mabel, as staff, do you have any comments for us before we go into executive session?
Not this time.
All right. All right, thanks, just wanted to check. I don't anticipate us being too long in this conference session. Are we?
Yeah, you want me to?
Ready? Yes, that would be great, please. And I'll go by the time that's on the Zoom computer, Zoom, yes, screen. It's now 1:05, back from a break and gonna go into our last new item, new business item on the agenda. After that, we will, we will turn off the Zoom, come back, turn back on the Zoom, and then all that we will have, should have left on our agenda is bills, payroll and minutes.
Okay. I will make a motion that the board goes into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4F.I. For the purpose of discussing the annual performance review.
What? Is it I or L?
Or L.
It's number one.
Number one, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
All right. Discussing the annual performance review of the county manager and CRS 24-6-402-4E for the purpose of receiving information and determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations.
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move into executive session at about 1:07. And we'll bring Zoom back up when we are through and then we'll call you back in, Cindy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cindy.